Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Present.
Present Counselor Capano?
Present.
Present Counselor Chakoudas?
Present.
Present Counselor Calucci?
Present.
Present Counselor Seer?
Present.
Present Counselor Fields?
Present.
Present Counselor Lapierre?
Present.
Present Counselor Lozey?
Present.
Present Counselor Net?
Present.
Present Counselor Staben?
Present.
Present Counselor Walsh?
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, keep in memory the family of Don Kenny.
And also the Laramie family.
At pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Have you heard any? Public hearings.
We have the petition of Nest Forward, 139 Monroe Street, for a sign permit.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Chakoudas.
I talked to Soraya today, who owns the real estate. She was sick, she couldn't make it tonight. But motion to approve the sign.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey? Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Maximo Duran, owner of Lincoln Market at 200 Essex Street, for a sign permit.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counselor Staben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went down there and spoke to one of the employees, as well as the owner, on the phone. Had them explain what type of sign that is. It's an awning, which is similar to what's in the neighborhood across the street. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Roll call. Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Sorry. Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staben?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, before we do the next public hearing, I just want everybody to know, we're gonna do this a little different. I'm gonna ask people who are in opposition to get up first to speak, rather than people who are in favor to get up to speak. So, next public hearing.
Public hearing regarding an ordinance to prevent wage theft in the city of Lynn.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Rick Wood. I'm the chairman of the Lynn Area Chamber of Commerce. And we've had considerable debate on this, and we are opposed to it. Our opposition stems mainly from the fact that this is a redundant law. There is already a state law on the books, and we see no reason to burden the city with the cost of administering this law. As I went through the ordinance itself, it's just, it's gonna impose a financial burden on the city. And I think it's the purchasing agent that has most of the burden, it seems like going through him or her. And so, we just see it as redundant law, and we don't see why we would wanna burden the city with extra expense, extra time. It is gonna cost the city money to enforce this. And also, I think that it will definitely scare away some businesspeople from doing business in the city, because, you know, it's just regulation. It's just more regulation. It makes the city unfriendly to businesspeople, and this is jobs to our citizens. And the other point is... Thank you. So, it's basically, we see it as an overburden. It's gonna cost the city money, yeah. And the fact is, the city is in, you know, financial straits now, so for us to impose more of a financial burden on us, for a law that is already in effect, that is enforced by the state, we would suggest that we encourage the state to enforce the law more from their perspective, through their enforcement, than put the burden on the city of Lynn, which is already strapped financially. And it will also, we feel like, like I said, it will give the city a bad name for contractors coming in. And I think it will thin out the herd of people trying to put in bids for Lynn work, because it's, I mean, you're making contractors go back five years for every subcontractor that they have, to find, to make sure that they, you're putting a burden on contractors. A general contractor has to go back five years for every contractor, every subcontractor that he has, and they have to, I mean, that's an incredible burden on a contractor. I mean, there's already enough regulation as it is, to go back, and every contractor that he works with, he's gotta get five years of payroll records to see if this person is complying with the law that is already enforced by the state. So, in closing, you know, the chamber, I'll make it clear, the chamber is 110% behind wage theft. I'm an employer, you know, we're business owners on the chamber, and we are in no way in favor of anyone gaining unfair advantage by stealing from employees, stealing from our citizens. So, we support wage theft, you know, policing and enforcement, but we just don't support a redundant law. So, I ask for you to consider that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we go any further, I am gonna limit, from this point on, any speaker that gets up to one minute, because there's a lot of people, and I'm sure a lot of people wanna get up and have something to say. So, starting now, the next person who gets up to speak in opposition or in favor will be allowed to speak for one minute. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Chris Bibby, chairman of the Government Affairs Committee for the Lynn Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm not gonna repeat a number of things that Mr. Wood just mentioned, but I just wanna say that this is really the bailiwick of the Attorney General's office. There are very draconian laws, triple damages, automatic legal fees, et cetera. You know, I'm getting the impression that maybe the Attorney General's office is not doing their job. I've seen multiple different numbers on the claims that people have put in. Some of the averages turn out to be tremendous, hundreds of thousands of complaints. I mean, I just, it's hard to imagine a problem that big that the Attorney General would not be all over. I just think that it really is the Attorney General's job. They should be handling this, and I think it is burdensome to the city of Lynn, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to get up and speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing, I'm gonna ask one time. All those who are in opposition, if you wanna raise your hands to show support, you may do so at this time. That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone, and I remind you, I'm allowing you one minute to speak. Anyone wishing to get up and speak in favor of this petition? Please state your name and your address, sir. And please, in the audience...
Good evening. Thank you. City Councilor President Seer, Vice President Barton, and members of the city council. My name is Cindy Mark, and I'm the chief of the Fair Labor Division at the Attorney General's office. I'm happy to be joined today by a colleague, Shane Blundell. He's in the back of the room. I'll try to keep my remarks to one minute. The Fair Labor Division is the primary enforcer of wage and hour laws in Massachusetts, and it consists of 13 attorneys, 20 investigators, and we enforce minimum wage laws, overtime, prevailing wage laws, misclassification, child labor laws, and earned sick time laws, among some other laws. The office has both criminal and civil enforcement authority. I'm proud to say that more than a third of our employees speak a second language, including Spanish, Portuguese, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Haitian Creole. Each year, our division receives thousands of complaints. Last year, we received about 6,000 complaints, and we're on track to receive about 6,000 again this year. In the last fiscal year, we resolved over 600 cases for almost $9 million in restitution and penalties on behalf of about 11,000 workers. The construction and restaurant industries continue to have the highest percentage of violations cited, but we also see violations in many other industries. I did look at...
Ten seconds.
I did look at some of our numbers for Lynn, and in the last two years, we've received complaints against about 40 businesses, and we've recovered about $80,000 in wages against Lynn businesses. So, I just wanna say, if I only have 10 seconds. When I was coming in, I saw some signs, and the signs said things like "Wage theft hurts us all," and "Wage theft is a crime," and "Wage theft means that there's no money for rent or food," and those things are all true. Without taking a position on the ordinance that's before you tonight, I would just like to applaud the city council for looking into the problem of wage theft. We welcome your partnership in this important effort, because we know that the federal government is pulling back, and we can't do it alone, and so we look for partners wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name, sir, and your address.
Buenas noches a todos los autoridades y amigos que estamos aquí. Tengan buenas noches. Mi nombre es Mario Chun. Vivo acá en Lynn, en la 24 de la Roca Way Street, apartamento 3.
Good evening to everybody here, to all of the city officials. My name is Mario Chun, and I live here in Lynn at 24 Roca Bien Street, apartment 3.
Estoy acá en este lugar para contar dos experiencias no buenas.
I'm here tonight to speak about two bad experiences that I had.
La primera es, le trabajé a una persona que se llama Roberto da Silva, para allá para Dover, en una casa particular, estuve pegando ladrillo por dos meses, pero que en el tiempo que llegamos primero, la persona no estaba pagando, y luego, como a la mitad de la casa, nos quedó mal, ya no nos pagó, y no nos pagó, y me quedo debiendo 95 horas.
So, the first experience, I was working for a man named Roberto da Silva in the town of Dover, and I was working on a private house, putting up brick. And we worked on that house for two months, and halfway through the finishing up the house, I wasn't paid. And this man ended up owing me 95 hours of my work.
Fifteen seconds. Fifteen seconds, okay?
Después le estuve llamando, y ya no me pagó. La otra persona se llama Javier, y me quedo debiendo cuatro semanas de trabajo, y no me pagó. Entonces, yo le ruego aquí a las autoridades, a los concejales, a la autoridad de acá de Lynn, que por medio de ustedes pueden pasar la ordenanza aquí en Lynn, para que ya no haya robo de salarios, por favor. Yo les pido, y todavía estoy lamentando porque mi familia está lamentando, no tengo trabajo desde ese tiempo, no he conseguido trabajo, y por esta persona que no nos ha pagado.
The other person that I worked for, his name was Javier, and I was doing the work here in Lynn on a commercial building, and he still owes me four weeks of work that I worked for him. So, I'm here tonight to ask all of you, as city councilors of Lynn, to please pass the ordinance to make sure that there's no more wage theft. I still, after all this time, I'm still suffering in my family. I haven't found more work, and I still have debts to pay. So, please pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. You have one minute, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom O'Malley. I reside at 79 Boylston Street in Jamaica Plain in Boston, and our offices are at 10 Post Office Square in Boston. I'm with the AFL-CIO Housing Investment Trust. It is a $6 billion investment vehicle that has built 95,000 units of houses over the last 40 years. And by the way, we are the investors in the Washington Gateway Project next to the college. We invested $20 million in cash in that project, and I wanna point out that it has six types of subsidy, and every one of the subsidies comes with regulation and deed restrictions. And we did not find that an obstacle to investing in that project. So, the language here being proposed tonight should not create an obstacle for investors. And that's what I'm here to say, is that the language proposed in the TIF wage, anti-wage theft ordinance is enforceable without causing investors to avoid the project. You know, I wanna point out that when we did this project, Senator McGee, now mayor, was a huge supporter of the project. Tax increment financing and affordable housing have an awful lot in common. The public is granting benefits, and they have the right and the responsibility to make sure that the public interest is watched over.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
If they, so in this ordinance, there's plenty of time for the contractor and the developer to remedy the situation. If they fail to remedy the situation, they do not deserve the public benefit of a TIF. As with the responsible bidder language and the responsible contractor language, this anti-wage theft ordinance being passed is only half the fight. The other half is your willingness to enforce it as a city and a town.
Thank you, sir.
I ask you to pass this bill tonight, and finally, I just wanna assure you that the Housing Investment Trust will be here in Lynn for further investments, given our experience up the street. Thank you very much.
Please, you have one minute. Ma'am, if you do that one more time, I'm gonna ask you to leave the chambers. Please respect the chambers and all the people that are here. Thank you. You have one minute.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Laura Ramirez, y vivo en esta ciudad de Lynn desde hace 18 años. También soy miembro del Centro de Trabajadores de Lynn.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Laura Ramirez, and I live here in the city of Lynn, and I've lived here for the past 18 years. I'm also a member of the Lynn Workers Center.
Llegué a esta ordenanza porque ya había trabajado en un restaurante en Salem, y el dueño del restaurante me dijo que me iba a pagar a cada dos semanas, y no me pagó. Y trabajé por un mes, y no me pagó. Y me dijo que tenía que regresar por mi sueldo en dos, la semana después, y no. Y ya había cerrado el restaurante, y después fui a buscar a donde él vive, y ya se había mudado.
So, I came to the Lynn Workers Center because I was working in a restaurant in Salem, and I wasn't paid. So, I was supposed to be paid every two weeks, and after two weeks, I didn't get my money, so I asked the boss, and he said, "Come in another two weeks and I'll pay you." So, two more weeks passed, and he still didn't pay me, and so then I had to leave because I wasn't getting paid anything. And when I went back again to look for my check, he had closed the business. I went to try to find him at his house, but he had already moved.
Y lo cual me hizo difícil es que no podría pagar la renta, los billes. Como residente de Lynn, deseo que ustedes voten a favor de esta ordenanza para así provenir el robo del salario en nuestra ciudad, así otras personas no pasen por la misma situación que yo atravesé. Gracias.
So, this made it a very difficult situation for me and for my family, because I wasn't able to pay rent, I wasn't able to pay my bills. And so I'm here tonight to just please ask you to pass this ordinance, so that no other person has to go through what I went through in wage theft. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please try to limit your time.
Short and sweet. Kathleen Santora, Sud Cliff Road, Lynn. I'm here as both a resident and a tradeswoman, and, well, we're all anxious to see development done in Lynn here. We want it done correctly, and we want people to be paid fairly. There is no reason that anyone should fear this wage ordinance. If you're an honest businessperson, you have nothing to worry about. It's fear, it's the right thing to do, and I ask that you vote it in, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Sir, please limit your time to one minute.
Good evening, everybody here. My name is Christina Costa. I own a business over here across the street, 590 X Street, Canon's Place Barbershop. And I am here bringing a letter to support. I would like to have, maybe 30 seconds already. I say, I'm writing this, you know, to the city council, to support, you know, the proposal, you know, anti-wage theft, you know, ordinance in Lynn. We all know that, you know, wages theft harm worker and their family, you know. And as a small business owner, I, you know, I know that wages theft is hurting a company, and follow, you know, follow the rules and pay their worker fairly. We should not allow, we should not allow companies and contractors, you know, to steal wages on their cut. And, you know, the honest, small business that are such as important, you know, part of the local economy and our community. I hope Lynn, you know, passes a strong ordinance, you know, and protect, you know, workers, honest, small businesses too, and our community too. I'd like to drop this here. Thank you for listening, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If anybody has something that they're not able to say, and they have it written, and they want it entered into the record, they can present it to the clerk, and we will make sure that it gets entered into the minutes of the meeting.
Jeff Crosby, North Shore Labor Council, 34 Thistle Street in Lynn. I think most councilors know that we've spent a lot of time working with the city attorney and the city councils to try to minimize the administrative burden on the city, because we understand you don't have a bunch of people laying around to hire somebody new. We understand that situation. So, we volunteered to set up as an advisory committee, and we're gonna include, the resolution would include somebody from the chamber, someone from the Lynn Latino Business Association, to try to do, help make this thing work at the least possible burden to the city. We really come here tonight with a very simple proposition, which is that if people work, they should get paid. Doesn't sound controversial. We also think that businesses, as you just heard, who obey the law should not get run out of businesses, run out of business by those who don't. And we also think everybody ought to pay their fair share of taxes. If the city is concerned, as I know we all are, about our financial situation, then we should support this, because it will help make sure that revenue for lost wages is actually turned into the city and state, and will come back to us. The relationship between the employers and workers is broken in this country. We can't fix all that right here. We understand that. But what we can do, and I really applaud the city council for considering this, if this passes, we begin to take a step to try to fix some of the situations that you've just heard about. So, I wanna thank all of you for your hard work on this. I'm anticipating this will pass, I certainly hope so. And I also wanna thank all the people here who did a lot of work and came down here, talked to their councilors, listened to their councilors, and I think found a bill that'll make this a very proud day in the city of Lynn. So, thank all of you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All those who are in favor, and you don't wanna get up and speak, if you wanna raise your hands to let the council know that you're in support. I think the clerk can put down a very large majority of people in the room who are in favor of this. That part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council? Counselor Capano?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the anti-wage theft ordinance as advertised with suggested changes of the Law Department and the North Shore Labor Council. I would ask the city clerk to read the ordinance with amendments into the record, please.
A motion has been made.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Walsh. Please.
Whereas the city of Lynn annually spends hundreds of thousands of dollars purchasing food, apparel, and other goods and services, and whereas the city of Lynn as a consumer intends to be cognizant of the impact that our consumption has on the workers that provide services throughout Lynn, and whereas the city of Lynn council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the city of Lynn, and whereas the practice commonly known as wage theft, improperly withholding payment from employees and failing to pay them according to required schedules harms the well-being of employees, their families, and their communities. And whereas our low-income immigrant and limited English proficient workers are most vulnerable to this practice, who represent a high percentage of the population of the municipality of Lynn, and whereas workers in the hospitality service and construction industries are also vulnerable to this practice. And whereas the high cost of wage theft to the city, its business community, and its residents impedes the city's economic development and growth, and whereas requiring city vendors to certify to the city their compliance with federal and state wage law or to report violations and provide a wage bond strengthens the city's ability to hire vendors that treat their employees fairly. And whereas prohibiting the purchasing department from contracting with debad vendors for the period of debarmment will help to ensure the city resources are not used to support house vendors debad for wage law violations. And whereas the city desires to ensure that potential incumbent recipients of licenses issued under general law, Chapter 138, and Chapter 140 comply with applicable wage laws. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lynn that the city of Lynn ordinance code, as amended, is hereby further amended and adopted as follows. Section 1, definitions. For the purpose of this ordinance, the following definitions apply. Employee: A natural person who performs work for an employer operating within the geographic boundaries of Lynn, but shall not include any bona fide independent contractor, as defined by general law, Chapter 149, Section 148b. Employer: Any natural person or business, whether or not incorporated or unincorporated, who suffers or permits another to work, number 1 in the city of Lynn, number 2 under a contract to which the city of Lynn or one of its departments is signatory, or under agreement with the city for tax incentives, or number 3, who otherwise maintains a commercial presence in the city of Lynn. This definition excludes, 1, the United States or a corporation wholly owned by the government of the United States, and 2, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, its subdivisions, and corporate bodies. Number 3, employ, including as used in the term employment, to suffer or work to permit work. Independent contractor, as defined in general law, Chapter 149, Section 148b, Massachusetts Independent Contractor Law, and any applicable regulations or advisory guidance implementing that statute. Number 5, minimum wage, as defined at general law, Chapter 151, Section 1, as well as any other state or federal statute or regulation establishing a minimum fair wage for a particular occupations or classes of workers. Number 6, overtime, as defined in general law, Chapter 151, Section 1A. Number 7, prevailing wage, as defined in general law, Chapter 149, Section 26-27H. Number 8, timely payment of wages, as defined by general law, Chapter 149, Section 148. Number 9, wage, as defined by general law, Chapter 149, Section 148. Number 10, wage theft. Any action by an employee, his officers, agents, or employees, causing an employee not to make a timely and/or complete payment of wages to pay the minimum wage or prevailing wage, or to pay overtime earned and owing to an employee. Number 11, application, an initial application or renewal of a license or permit. Number 12, city contractor, an employer who holds or seeks to hold a contract for goods, services, or labor with the city of Lynn. Number 13, administrative citation, a civil citation issued by the Attorney General pursuant to general law, Chapter 149, Section 27c, a civil citation... to general law, chapter 149, section 27c, a civil citation issued by the Department of Labor pursuant to 29 U.S.C., section 201 et cetera, and/or 29 CFR, section 578, and/or any other civil citation for violation of Mass. General Law, chapter 149, or chapter 151, and/or 29 U.S.C., section 201 et cetera, issued by any other federal, state, or local administrative agency. Number 14, stop work order, as defined in general law, chapter 152, section 25c, and 452 CMR, section 8.00. Number 15, a TIF agreement, a tax increment financing agreement as such term is defined by general law, chapter 23a, section 3a, chapter 40, section 59, and 760 CMR 22 et cetera. A TIF plan, a tax increment financing plan as such term is defined by 760 CMR 22.00 et cetera. Number 17, EACC, Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, as defined by general law, chapter 23a, section 3a, and established by general law, chapter 23a, section 3b. Section 2, Wage Theft Advisory Committee. The Wage Theft Advisory Committee defined. There shall be established a Wage Theft Advisory Committee comprised of 1 designee submitted by the Lynn City Council, 1 designee submitted by the mayor, 1 representative chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the North Shore Labor Council, 1 representative chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the Lynn Area Chamber of Commerce, 1 representative chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the North Shore Latino Business Association, 1 representative chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the North Shore Building Trades Council, 1 representative chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the Lynn Worker Center, and 1 representative from the Lynn community chosen by the Lynn City Council from a list provided by the New Lynn Coalition. Members of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee may be reappointed annually and must be appointed no later than the second meeting of the new year. B, duties. The Wage Theft Advisory Committee will meet at least once every two months to review wage theft complaints and provide advice to the city council on the implementation and effectiveness of the wage theft ordinance. In addition, each year the committee shall elect from among its members a voluntary secretary who shall receive wage theft complaints received by the city solicitor's office pursuant to section 3.0 of this ordinance and coordinate any responses to such complaint that is required by the ordinance. In addition, members of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee may offer education, guidance, and referrals to employees affected by wage theft in Lynn at the city-sponsored events and in collaboration with other city departments. C, reporting requirements. The city of Lynn shall publish an annual report through the Wage Theft Advisory Committee detailing all wage theft complaints received and action taken in response to such complaints, including specifically the status or final disposition of each complaint where available. The report shall also include civil and criminal judgments issued by the state and federal courts, administrative citations, and final administrative orders, including but not limited to departments against employers pursuant to general law, chapter 149, and general law, chapter 151, if known. D, conflict of interest. For the purposes of this ordinance, no member of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee shall participate in any proceeding concerning a beneficiary, a covered vendor, or a covered employee. If the member or any member of his or her immediate family has a direct or indirect financial interest in said individual or in an award of a service contract, subcontract, or assistance, or granting of relief to said individual. Section 3, Wage Theft Complaint Process. A, filing and receipt of complaints. The city of Lynn at the office of the city solicitors shall be referred complaints of violations of state law under general law, chapter 149, and chapter 151. The city solicitors' office shall refer employees affected by wage theft in Lynn to appropriate agencies. Complaints may be filed by an affected employee or any other person. B, required communication with Attorney General's office. On a biannual basis, a representative from the city will request to meet with the office of the Attorney General to discuss complaints involving city employees and to better coordinate on issues of wage theft in the city. C, required communications with other city departments. The city solicitors' office shall forward each complaint submitted to the city of Lynn's purchasing agent and the Lynn Licensing Commission, the Lynn City Council, to the Wage Theft Advisory Committee. If the complaint pertains to work performed at any property subject to a TIF agreement, the city solicitors' office shall also send a copy to the EACC. Section 4, requirements for city contractors. A, RFP bid and successful bidder requirements. Every request for proposals, RFP, or bid issued by the purchasing agent shall include the certification and disclosure requirements imposed by this section. Every RFP or bid issued by the purchasing agent shall notify bidders that they have an affirmative duty to report any criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, or final administrative determination for wage theft against the bidder or any of its subcontractors entered within the five years prior to bid submission, as well as any departments against the bidder or any of its subcontractors in effect while its bid is pending to the city. And shall further notify bidders that if they are the successful bidder, they and any of their subcontractors have an affirmative duty to report any criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or department against the bidder or any subcontractors while their contract with the city is in effect within five business days of receipt. The RFP or bid will identify the purchasing department as the department to whom this must be reported.
Madam Clerk, have a drink while I substitute for you here. Number 3, every RFP or bid issued by the purchasing agent shall notify bidders that they may not contract with the city if they have been either voluntarily or involuntarily debarred by the federal government, any agency of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other state, or any municipal body, including but not limited to the city of Lynn, for the entire term of the department. Such RFPs or bids shall also notify bidders that they may not use any subcontractor who has been debarred by the federal government or any other state or municipal government during the period of that subcontractor's debarment. Number 4, bidders that are subject to municipal, state, or federal debarment for violation of the above laws, either voluntarily or involuntarily, or that have been prohibited from contracting with the Commonwealth or any of its agencies or subdivisions, will be deemed not responsible and their bids or proposals shall be rejected. Such bidders shall be deemed not responsible for the entire term of debarment or other stated time period during the term of the contract. Upon a finding or order of such debarment or prohibition, the city may terminate the contract. Number 5, successful bidders must either, A, provide a certification of compliance as required by this section to the extent that the bidder has been in business for less than five years, it shall provide a certification certifying compliance for the entire period of time for which the entity has been in existence. B, to the extent of judgment, citation, or final administrative order has been issued against a bidder within five years prior to its bid, provide a copy of the same in addition to documentation demonstrating that all damages, fines, costs, and fees have been paid. In addition, the bidder must post a bond to be maintained for the life of the contract as specified by this section. 6, successful bidders must agree or post the notice available at www.mass.gov in a conspicuous location accessible to all their employees. To the extent not all employees would have reasonable access to the notice if posted in a single location by a successful bidder, the successful bidder must inform the purchasing agent or other city department of the number of location postings in order to ensure that the successful bidder provides reasonable notice to all of their employees and agrees to make those additional postings. B, certification and disclosures. The purchasing agent entering into contracts on behalf of the city shall adopt the attached certification and disclosure requirement for all applicants providing. 1, that an applicant certify to the purchasing agent that neither they nor any of their subcontractors have been subject to a criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or department resulting from a violation of GL, chapter 149, GL, chapter 151, or 29 U.S.C., section 201, within five years of their application. Number 2, in the alternative, the applicant shall disclose to the purchasing agent any such criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, or debarment, and include a copy of the same in their applications. Number 3, the purchasing department when issuing an RFP or bid shall notify applicants they have an affirmative duty to report any criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment against them or any of their subcontractors related to wage theft and occurring while the contract is in effect to the department within five business days of receipt. Letter C, reporting and notice requirements during the contract term. Number 1, upon request by the purchasing agent, all city contractors shall furnish their monthly certified payrolls to the city's purchasing agent for all employees working on city contracts. Number 2, to the extent a contractor is for a term of a year or more, city contractor will provide the purchasing agent with a certification compliant with the section on the effective date of the contract and each anniversary thereof until the contract expires. Number 3, all city contractors will furnish to the purchasing agent any criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment related to wage theft and issued during the term of their contracts with the city against the city contractor or its subcontractors within five business days of receipt. Number 4, to the extent required as set forth in subsection E below, all city contractors shall maintain a wage bond for the term of the contract with the city. Letter D, wage bonds. Number 1, any successful bidder or city contractor or subcontractor who has had criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment resulting from a violation of a MGL, chapter 149, MGL, C151, 29 U.S.C., section 201, or any other state or federal laws regulating the payment of wages within five years prior to the date it submits to its bids or proposals, and that is not otherwise prohibited from public contracting, shall be required by the city to obtain a wage bond or other form of suitable insurance in amount equal to the aggregate of one year's gross wages for all employees employed on the specific city of Lynn contract based on average of its total labor costs for the past two years. Such bond must be maintained for the terms of the extensions of any contract, and proof of such bond must be provided upon request by the city. Number 2, any city contractor or subcontractor that receives a criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment resulting from a violation of MGL, chapter 149, MGL, chapter 151, 29 U.S.C., section 201, or any other state or federal laws regulating the payment of wages during the term of the contract, and that is not otherwise prohibited from public contracting, shall be required by the city to obtain a wage bond or other form of suitable insurance in an amount equal to the aggregate of one year's gross wages for all employees employed on the specific city of Lynn contract based on an average of its total labor costs for the past two years. Such bond must be maintained for the terms of extensions of any contract, and proof of such bond must be provided upon request by the city. E, suspension or revocation of contract wage theft as material breach of conditions in RFP or bid. If a city contractor is found to be in violation of GL 149, GL 151, or 29 U.S.C., section 201, or this section, and therefore is breach of the contract with the city, the city may take one or more of the following actions. Number 1, revocation of city contractor's contract with the city. Number 2, suspension of city contractor's contract with the city. Number 3, imposing conditions on any future contracts with the city, including but not limited to the posting of a wage bond and other reasonable requirements. Letter F, requirements for successors in interest. The requirements of this section, including any sanctions imposed herein that are applicable to any employer, shall also be applicable to and effective against any successor employer that 1) has at least one of the same principles or offices as the prior employer, and 2) is engaged in same or equivalent trade or activity as the prior employer. Section 5, requirements for licenses and prospective licenses. A, requirements for license applicants. Any applications filed by the employer to the license commission for any license issued pursuant MGL, chapter 138, or MGL, chapter 140, may be denied if during the five-year period prior to the date of the application, the applicant employer has been subject to a federal and state criminal, civil judgment, administrative citation, order, debarment, or final administrative determination resulting from a violation of MGL, chapter 149, MGL, chapter 151, 29 U.S.C., section 201, or any other state or federal laws regulating the payment of wages. Each such applicant shall certify that she has not been found guilty, liable, or responsible in the past five years in any judicial or administrative proceedings for any violation of any of the laws set forth above. B, requirements for license holders. Any license or permit issued by the license commission under MGL, chapter 138, or MGL, chapter 140, to an employer may be modified, suspended, or revoked if during the term of the license or permit, the license or permitee employer has been subject to a criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment resulting from, A, violation of MGL, chapter 149, MGL, chapter 151, 29 U.S.C., section 201, or any other state and federal laws regarding, regulating the payment of wages. Letter C, wage bonds for license holders. Employers granted a license or permit that have disclosed a criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment resulting from a violation of MGL, chapter 149, MGL, chapter 151, 29 U.S.C., section 201, or any other state or federal laws regulating the payment of wages within five years prior to the date that they submit their applications, or employers granted a license or permit who become subject to a federal or state criminal, a civil judgment, administrative citation, final administrative determination, order, or debarment resulting from a violation of MGL, chapter 149, MGL, chapter 151, 29 U.S.C., and section 201, or any other state or federal laws regulating the payment of wages during the term of the license of the permit, shall be required by the city to obtain a wage bond or other form of suitable insurance in the amount equal to the aggregate of one year's gross wages for all employees based on an average of its total labor costs for the past two years. Such bond must be maintained for the terms or extensions of any license or permit, and proof of such bond must be provided upon request by the city. Failure to comply with the subsection may constitute grounds for modification, suspension, and/or revocation of the license or permit pursuant to subsection B. Letter D, requirements for successors in interest. The requirements of this section, including any sanctions imposed herein that are applicable to any employer, shall also be applicable to and effective against any successor employer that 1) has at least one of the same principles or offices as the prior employer, and 2) is engaged in the same or equivalent trade or activity as the prior employer. Section C, requirements for tax incremental financing, TIF agreements. Letter A, certifications and disclosures. It shall be a special and material condition of any future TIF agreement that any and all persons, natural or corporate, who are signatories to the agreement provided city of Lynn via its Wage Theft Advisory Committee with a list of all construction managers, general contractors, lead or prime contractors, any entity functioning in any such capacity, and any other contractor or subcontractor of any tiered engaged to perform work on the property subject to the tax increment financing plan during the time of the TIF agreement. An initial list must be provided to the committee prior to the start of any work on the property subject to the TIF agreement. Should any additional replacement entities be engaged to perform work on the property subject to the TIF agreement during the term of the agreement, the signatory must provide the name of such entity no later than 14 days after the entity begins work on the property. All signatories to the agreement shall further certify that they shall not engage any entity to perform work on the property covered under the agreement which is subject to any debarment for any reason or for an unpaid criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, or final administrative determination for wage theft, nor any entities performing work on the... I'm glad I got to say that one more time.
Nobody else wants to read? Where am I?
You're on page nine at the top. Bet you wish I only gave them a minute to speak, huh?
Okay. Property been the subject of an indictment and judgment or grant of immunity, including pending action for any business-related conduct constituting a crime under state or federal law, nor any entities performing work on the property been the subject of a government suspension or debarment, rejection of any bid or disapproval of any proposed contract or subcontract, including pending actions for lack of responsibility, denial, or revocation of prequalification, or a voluntary exclusion agreement, nor entities performing work on the property been the subject of any governmental determination of a violation or any public works law or regulation, or labor law or regulation of any OSHA violation deemed serious or willful. Within the five-year period preceding the date such agreement is signed, if notwithstanding such certification, any interested person gives the city of Lynn written notice via the Wage Theft Advisory Committee that any person or entity engaged to perform work on a property subject to a tax increment financing plan is subject to a debarment, unpaid criminal, or civil judgment, administrative citation, or final determination in violation of the certification provisions of this subsection, and entered within the five-year period prior to the date the TIF agreement is signed. The secretary of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee shall write to all signatories to be agreement within 10 days and request that the outstanding judgment or determination be satisfied while the person or entity subject to such judgment or determination be immediately replaced on the project. If the outstanding judgment has not been satisfied, nor the person or entity subject to such judgment placed on the project within 14 days of when the secretary informs the signatories to the agreement of the outstanding wage theft violation, then the agreement shall provide that such an event materially frustrates the public purpose for which this agreement and any certifications of the tax increment financing plan by the city was intended to advance. Special and material conditions of TIF agreements within the city of Lynn. It shall be a special and material condition of any TIF agreement that any construction manager, general contractor, or other lead or primary contractor, or any entity functioning in any such capacity, or any other contractor or subcontractor of any tier, or other person that is engaged to perform the work during the term of their TIF agreement on the property... that is engaged to perform the work during the term of their TIF agreement on the property that is the subject of the tax increment financing plan, shall comply with the following qualifications and condition at all times during their performance of work on the property. One, the firm must maintain appropriate industrial accident insurance sufficient to provide coverage for all employees on the project in accordance with General Law, Chapter 152, and provide documented proof of such coverage to the building inspector to be maintained in the building department as a public record. Two, the firm must properly classify employees as employees rather than independent contractors and treat them accordingly for purposes of workman's compensation, insurance, coverage, unemployment taxes, social security taxes, and state and federal tax withholding, General Law, Chapter 149, Section 148B, on employee classification. The firm must comply with General Law, Chapter 149, Section 148, with respect to the payment of wages, and the firm must be in compliance with the health and hospitalization requirements of the Massachusetts Health Care Reform Law established by Chapter 58 of the Acts of 2006, as amended and regulations promulgated under that statute by the Commonwealth Health Insurance Connector Authority. Wage theft complaints for properties covered by TIF agreements. The City of Lynn Wage Theft Advisory Committee shall promptly respond to any complaints for violations of the legal obligations outlined in Subsections B-1-6, including complaints for wage theft filed through the city clerk that pertain to work performed at any property subject to a TIF agreement by sending notice of any such complaint to all signatories of the TIF agreement within 30 days of receiving such complaint. The Wage Theft Advisory Committee may take appropriate steps to resolve such complaint after such notice is provided, including but not limited to arranging informal involuntary mediations involving the affected worker, the agreement signatories, and any implicated contractor or subcontractor of any tier of the project. If after the Wage Theft Advisory Committee has properly served notice of the complaint upon the signatories to the TIF agreement pursuant to this subsection, any employee shall become subject to a federal or tax criminal or civil judgment, administrative citation, stop work order, debarment, or final administrative determination resulting from violation of any of the legal obligations outlined at Subsections B-1-4. And if such judgment citation or order is not satisfied or discharged, or the offending employer replaced on the project within 14 days of the entry of such judgment citation or order, the parties agree that such an event materially frustrates the public purpose that the TIF agreement and any other certification of the tax increment financing plan by the city was intended to advance. Termination of the TIF agreements. In the event the public purpose of the TIF agreement or TIF plan is materially frustrated pursuant to Subsections A and/or C, the City Council shall hold a public hearing and vote at its next regularly scheduled meeting regarding whether to terminate the tax relief provided by such TIF agreement and petition the EACC for the revocation of that portion of its certification of the TIF plan corresponding to such TIF agreement. If the termination of such TIF agreement is approved by the council and mayor, or by the council over the mayor's veto, the owner of the property covered by such TIF agreement shall forfeit the receipt of any funds or future tax benefits and/or shall return any funds already received in connection with the project. F, the requirements for successors in interest. The requirements of this section, including any sanctions imposed herein that are applicable to any employer, shall also be applicable to and affect against any successor employer that has at least one of the same principles or offices as the prior employer, and, two, is engaged in the same or equivalent trade or activity as the prior employer. G, reporting and notice requirements during agreement term. Upon request by the Wage Theft Advisory Committee, all employers performing a work upon a property subject to TIF agreement shall furnish their monthly certified payrolls to the Wage Theft Advisory Committee for all employees providing labor or services at the property subject to such agreement. And finally, Section seven, severability. If any provision of this ordinance is held invalid or unenforceable by any court, such as the holding does not invalidate or render unenforceable any other provision of the ordinance, and the rest of the ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. The end.
Discussion. Counselor Capano.
I'd just like to say a few things here. First of all, we heard testimony from a part of a development team with the only development on the waterfront so far, successful development, almost built right now, millions of dollars. We heard from that team in favor of the wage theft ordinance. We've had businesses speak tonight in favor of the wage theft ordinance. We've heard about the advisory committee, which would include members of the business community, labor, and the community, and most importantly, we've heard testimony from workers who've been affected by non-payment of wages. So I'd just like to say that I think, you know, we also heard from the Attorney General's Office on how the federal government is slowly but surely pulling the plug on funding to states and local communities, and someone has to step in here. I mean, we have $700 million in unpaid wages, that's all tax money that could go to the state and go to the cities and towns. Tremendous respect for businesses in Lynn. Majority of businesses are honorable and respect workers, but there are a few, and somebody, we're from Lynn here, someone has to speak up for the workers. We have to protect workers and show them the same respect we show to employers, and I think this ordinance does that, and I urge my colleagues to vote for it. I want to, one more thing, and this ordinance has been worked on for a long time. It's not something that was just thrown together, it's not a resolution that we just throw here to pass to make somebody happy. There's been a lot of serious thought that's went into this, from the business community, President Seer, Vice President Barton, Chairman of the Ordinance Committee, Chairman Lozey, all the councils really, Counsel Walsh early on, the Law Department here, and the Northshore Labor Council, all put some serious thought into trying to make this work. So it's just not a piece of paper, but something that we can all make work together for the workers, to help the workers and the honest employers in this city.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Counsel LaPierre.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very mindful of the busy agenda we have this evening, and I'll try to stay within that one-minute time constraint. I know my colleagues are saying he never will do that, but I'm going to give it a try. So first of all, I want to say I applaud everyone who is here, but a special note of thanks to, it's not very often I have local education presidents, my daytime work with the AFT and Lynn Teachers Union. I want to shout out Sheila O'Neill, President of Lynn Teachers Union, being in attendance, and Beth Kontos, President of Salem Teachers Union, and also Northshore Labor Council, Secretary-Treasurer Brant Duncan from the American Federation of Teachers, Massachusetts, and my president, Tom Gosnell, is here from the American Federation of Teachers, Massachusetts. That being said, and all of the House of Labor that has joined in the city council chambers this evening, we were on the record, my council-at-large colleagues, at a forum sponsored by the New Lynn Coalition, Northshore Labor Council, and Mass Senior Action and the Worker Center, early on this summer during the campaign. We all pledged 100% that we would get this passed this evening. We didn't know how long it would take, but here we are stepping up. Promises made, promises kept. I also want to reference a March 8 article in the Lynn Item. If folks don't think this is happening, it is happening. It's happening across the state, as my colleague Counsel Capano said, $700 million. Here in Lynn alone, contract decided for wage law violations. Attorney General Healy's office cannot keep up with the influx of these complaints. $33,000 workers in Lynn were stiffed from a painting company, and the painter's company comment that I read from the paper, "One way did not return a call seeking comment." Well, guess what? After this vote tonight, they will have no choice but to return our calls. They will be held accountable by the City of Lynn and everything we put forth here tonight. I have to share with you one story. When I was out on the campaign trail this summer, and I spoke with a woman who was a part-time cleaner, and you know that she was telling me in broken English that she had done a day, a week's pay, over 40 hours, and it was part-time work, and her employer decided to pay her in gift cards. Not only was this poor woman paid in gift cards, which is a total violation, these were Visa Vanilla gift cards that would start to expire after every time of non-usage, and she would be hit with fees upon fees, and a $200 gift card for a $400 day, week's pay was already not only reduced by half in a gift card wage, but it's also, time is running out on that gift card. How can we ever, in good conscience, we have to put a stop to this unscrupulous behavior? I supported it in August, I'm supporting it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Matt.
Mr. President, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just want to thank all the resident and concerned citizens who are here tonight to support this ordinance, and I think it's very important, and I just want to echo my colleague, Counsel LaPierre, that we, when we were campaigning over the summer, we committed to support this ordinance, and tonight I will stick my ground and support it. And I also want to thank those who sent me so many letters, and I brought them here with me tonight, and I will not, I read them all, I say I read them all, and I appreciate it very much, and also a lot of phone calls as well. So I ask my colleague to support this as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel. Also, Staubert.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a business owner that competes and has to compete with other businesses in my field who don't pay their employees on the books, hire employees that have no legal work papers, pay them cash, don't pay benefits, don't pay overtime, and on and on and on, I can definitely see the point. As a business owner, we want, and all business owners want, a level playing field. We don't want to be held to a competitive disadvantage because we obey the laws and take care of our employees. My concern with this, and I'd like to thank especially Katie Cohen, who I spent quite a bit of time talking with right up till last night, for, you know, going over a lot of the language in there and opening it up for change. My major concerns was how burdensome this would be on the city, and the original right of this had a lot of the burden going on the clerk's office. We all know how overburdened the clerk's office is, and so we're able to take that away, and, you know, I thank Attorney Lamanna for the time that he's put into it, working with the Labor Council. This went right up to this afternoon. And I just want to ask the question, because I think a lot of people are concerned about it, especially from a business point of view, people in the chamber, and, you know, Katie was there for our Government Affairs meeting at a chamber meeting. Unfortunately, it was the day that we had the mayor there, and it ran very long, so a lot of folks couldn't hang back at that meeting and get the information that Katie and the Attorney General's Office was offering up. But if I could just ask Attorney Lamanna, Attorney Lamanna, are there any costs to be borne by the city with the passage of this ordinance?
There are no costs. As originally written, there would have been some costs for the last six months negotiating with the Northshore Labor Council. That has been one of the directives I've received, is to ensure there are no costs to the City of Lynn. I'm confident to report that there will be no costs to the City of Lynn, and no burden to any offices except Purchasing Department who is satisfied that it's not excessive, and the Law Department, Attorney District of the State of Minneapolis is comfortable it's not going to be overly burdensome for our office.
Do you don't feel that it would be overburdensome on potential developers looking to develop into the city via added paperwork that they wouldn't have to go through in another community?
As negotiated before you, I do not believe that there's significant danger of that. If employees pay the proper wages, the burdens on requesting certified payrolls will not occur.
Okay. And from a developer point of view, from a purchasing point of view, it's as easy as those folks just checking on the AG's website to make sure that none of these proposed contractors appear as violators on that website?
That is correct. The purchasing agent from the city side for bidders will be doing that exact same thing, going to the website to ensure that there's no bidder that has done a wage violation. If they receive complaints under the TIF sections, there is a 14-day period to correct those and make sure wages are paid properly, and if not, that the subcontractor that's guilty of any wage violations could be replaced. So I'm confident that there is a remedy here in a time period where developers and the contractors can correct issues that would not just jeopardize the TIF in general and deter financing, which was a large concern of mine early on, looking at the earlier versions.
Okay, and just, I'm sorry, one more question.
One more.
If a developer does have a TIF, hires somebody thinking everything's on the up and up, they find a pathway through, as long as they dispatch that particular subcontractor, they're not at risk of losing their TIF?
That's correct. There's a window where the Wage Theft Advisory Committee meets with the parties, tries to informally mediate. If, hopefully at that point, the parties can agree there was a mistake in wages, or maybe the employer did not make a mistake, and employee was mistakenly, under a belief that he was underpaid, the Wage Theft Committee will work there, and then if there is a violation, they have 14 days to correct it. And then if it's done, then there's no jeopardy on the TIF. So there is a built-in, I believe, 24-day period where things can be resolved not to allow for a TIF to be in jeopardy.
And for an employer to...
Another one.
For an employer to appear on that list, it has to be pretty egregious. They have to have repeatedly ignored requests to write the situation, to pay whatever it is, that they're owed, I mean, they've given up, you know, gone through all their due process and still ignored it.
That's correct. The AG's office will do a thorough investigation, interview parties. I would assume a good employer that gets a letter or a phone call from the Attorney General's Office that knows they're in violation will want to rectify this very quickly. So for the Attorney General's Office to find a violation and to put them on a naughty list, there would be some willful violations of the wage theft laws.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Barton.
Mr. President, I think we've been talking about this too long. I call for the vote.
I agree, but just real quickly before we do, the attorneys for the city, the attorneys for the union, Jeff Crosby, all the people involved in this, and the mayor as well, there were a lot of concerns, and I know there was a lot of work, and I want to commend Counsel Capano and Walsh on the work they did. People don't realize in Lynn the amount of work that goes into something. This was months and months, and as Counsel Staubert said, right up until the last second, this was back and forth. So there was a lot of hard work on both sides, and I can say this, the union really came up with what I believe now to be a fair ordinance. So roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakotis.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel LaPierre.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matt.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubert.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Congratulations. It'll be a five-minute recess. Five minutes.
Great job, Sean.
I'll get you the next time.
I'll get a new one soon.
Funny opportunities.
That was good.
That was good.
Was it wheat time?
Wheat time, yes.
Wheat time.
Yep, right now.
I know where to go.
We're planning to do quite a business.
I don't think we've got really many to accommodate something else.
If I land on, you've got 500 cars today.
He was lying now, La.
I hope you want to hang around with Triple A.
Great job, Sean.
I'll get you the next time. I'll get a new one soon.
Funny opportunities.
That was good, that was good.
Was it weed time?
Weed time, yes.
Weed time.
Yep, right now.
Planning to do quite a business. I don't think we've got really many accommodate something else. If planning on, you've got 500 cars a day. Have one school.
Public hearing regarding an ordinance amending the zone ordinance of the City of Lynn to establish a recreational cannabis overlay district.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
We didn't hear that.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
William Burton, 296 Nahat Road in Nahat. I'd like to start a cannabis-growing business. I think that Lynn is pretty centrally located to the North Shore area. It's a nice town. I think that this industry is going to bring a lot of revenue to Lynn, both because the small amount of taxes from growers and retail shops, but also from people who want to come to Lynn to go to those shops, because there's other areas around that do not allow this product. So, I think it's a strong business incentive for Lynn.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please go to the podium. State your name and your address, sir.
Good night, everybody. How you guys ever doing? Alexandra Quavis from 189 Essex Street. I know that the Cannabis Control Commission has cited a few, maybe some advice, maybe some guidance for municipalities and even individuals looking to get into the retail cannabis space about underserved and low-income communities, minority neighborhoods, having the afforded, the opportunity to engage in retail cannabis establishments, and I would like for the council to also be mindful of that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What's to wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance established, establishing a recreational cannabis ordinance with amendments as proposed by the Law Department, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to read those amendments.
All right, you want to get a second on that first?
Second.
Second.
Okay, the amendments are as follows. Strike Section 3J at this time in its entirety. Amend the first sentence of the Section 4A to read as follows. No cannabis establishment except a cannabis retail sales storefront which has been permitted to operate as a medical cannabis treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of a pre-existing public or private school, providing education in kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12 licensed by the Department of Education, in operation at the time of application for a special permit or site plan approval as measured by a typical path of travel door-to-door. This exception shall not apply to cannabis retail stores who are permitted to operate as a medical cannabis treatment center within the Medical Cannabis Treatment Center Overlay District. Three, Section 3K is hereby stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following: micro-business, a cannabis establishment that is licensed to act as a licensed cannabis cultivator, and this business is defined by the regulations promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission. Licensed cannabis product manufacturer and licensed cannabis delivery service in compliance with the operating procedures for such license. Number three, add Section 4B to read as follows. B, no cannabis establishment shall be located within 500 feet of another licensed cannabis establishment. Four, strike former Section 4C, which will now become 4D in its entirety and replaced with the following. D, as defined in Mass. General Law Chapter 94G, the number of cannabis retail storefronts shall be limited to no more than 20% of the number of licenses issued within the city for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises where sold under Mass. General Law Chapter 138, Section 15. Add to the table of use regulations the following. Business type the zone is allowed: cannabis retail sales storefront is allowed in B3, B, BSBZ, CBD, LI, and HI. Independent testing laboratory allowed in B3, B, BSBZ, CBD, LI, and HI. Delivery allowed in B3, B, CBD, LI, and HI. Cultivation manufacturer, LI, and HI. Except retail, footnote is, except retail cannabis sales storefronts that have also been permitted to operate a medical cannabis treatment center in any district in the City of Lynn within the Medical Cannabis Treatment Center Overlay Districts may be allowed in the zoning district in which they are allowed to dispense medical cannabis. Number six, strike 4, Section 4E in its entirety and replace with the following. E, a cannabis retail store, sales front, storefront is permitted by special permit in the B, B3, BSBZ, CBD, LI, and HI zoning districts, as well as those permitted within the Medical Cannabis Treatment Overlay District. Number seven, add Section 4F, which shall read. F, an independent testing laboratory is permitted by special permit in the B3, B, BSBZ, CBD, LI, and HI zoning districts. Eight, add Section 4G, which shall now read. A craft co-op cannabis cultivator, cannabis product manufacturer, and a micro-business shall be permitted by special permit in the LI and HI zoning districts. Nine, strike Section 5B in its entirety and place in its entirety. B, all business signers shall be subject to the requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission, ordinances of the City of Lynn, and any conditions contained in the special permit. Ten, strike 5C in its entirety. Eleven, strike Section 6A in its entirety and replace with the following. Any special permit issued by the Lynn City Council shall be conditioned on the execution of a community host agreement. And with that, we've received a recommendation from the Lynn Planning Board, who voted this evening, to request the city council to amend the zone ordinance establishing a recreational cannabis overlay district as amended.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion. Counsel Capano.
Yeah, I'd like to call Attorney Lamanna up to give a brief summary for the people that are here of the ordinance, so people could better understand what's being proposed here.
Right, as of April 1st, applicants can come to the Department of Public Health and apply for recreational marijuana. If the city council does not act before April 1st, they can be located anywhere in the city. So, this ordinance would allow the council to grant special permits at locations where the council feels it's appropriate in business zones. Absent this, the council will have no say on where they're located. After much research, we determined 200 feet from schools was appropriate, and separate from 500 feet from other locations that sell pot, so they wouldn't have two in one neighborhood.
Counsel Annette.
Mr. President, since we don't have any other option but to support this, there's any way, I would like to make, I'd like to make a recommendation. There's any way we can create a commission, marijuana or cannabis commission, just similar to a licensing, liquor license commission like that, so that way they can follow and monitor the rules and regulations. So, there's any way we can do that.
My understanding is the Board of Health is going to be passing its own regulations, regulating where you can smoke marijuana. They'll be very detailed, putting them together in response to the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations. It'll be a supplement and additional to, the Board of Health will decide who will be disciplining retail marijuana establishments that sell to minors or sell after hours. I believe that the Board of Health is also going to set hours of operation. So, the Board of Health will be similar to the Cannabis Control Commission, and a decision has to be made, is the Lynn License Committee, the appropriate committee to discipline. They may make a decision, that the city council would be that party, but given that the Liquor License Board issues discipline now on alcoholic beverage sales establishments, there may be some merit to having that board make these decisions with respect to discipline. But the Board of Health will be very similar to what you're proposing, Counsel Annette.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Just a little on, how many of these establishments we allowing in the city, and how did we get that number?
By state law, it's 20% of the number of package stores, so there's been two preliminary approved, medical marijuana, both of those have expressed an interest to sell medical marijuana and retail, so that would be six more that would open up in the city. We could do higher, but this ordinance is at the minimum number required by state law, which was eight, and two have already been selected.
Does it allow for the cultivation of it also, or is it just for the retail sale of it?
Eight retail sales is allowed by law. Cultivation, there's no limit, the limit is built into this ordinance as written. The council has to issue a special permit if someone's interested in cultivating in any manner, and the zones are limited to light industrial, heavy industrial, central business district, and the Boston Street Business Zone. So, those are only for that, oh, I'm sorry, for cultivation, it's just light and heavy industrial, research and lab, have some other, and this is testing, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be necessarily growing, but we're testing how to make products, edibles and such.
How about advertising with these storefronts? I know the state regulations, tell me a little bit about that.
The state has detailed regulations about not having pictures of pot plants, marijuana cannabis plants, I guess is the proper term, that are in place right now. This ordinance allows, at the time of the special permit, that the council can put conditions on it, and I would certainly encourage the council to ask for drawings and renderings of the signage that they're proposing, and if anything is unsatisfactory to this council, that is certainly an appropriate condition to put on the special permit. Without boxing ourselves in, I think it probably makes more sense to have you folks see what they're proposing, and if there's any, any opposition to what they're proposing, at the time of the special permit's the time to say yes or no, rather than create something where people are trying to find loopholes in our regulations.
Thank you.
Counsel Lozey. Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I'd like to applaud the Legal Department for proactively putting this zoning ordinance together that will regulate or limit the number of retail sales of marijuana in Lynn. I, I do have one objection, and that's, we're not, in my opinion, we're not expanding the zone far enough away from our schools in the city, and I can't support a 200-foot zone. I think it should be 500 feet, and I'm going to be just short and sweet with that, and I know we have to approve it, but I just feel that the zone should be expanded to 500 feet. Thank you. Before I recognize Counsel Field, Attorney Lamanna, if we don't vote for this tonight, and we need eight votes for this to carry, what happens?
Marijuana, retail marijuana facility could go anywhere in the city with no special permit granted by the city, so the council would have no say in the location of these businesses. I will say that the 500 feet, much work was done by Deputy Commissioner Amukie in putting together maps that I believe were included in all your packets Friday. The 500 feet, I believe, that was suggested by the Cannabis Control Commission may work in a small town when there's a high school, a kindergarten, elementary school, and a middle school, that still opens up plenty of land, given that we have 27, I believe, public schools, three or four parochial schools and charter schools. It blocks out most of the city. The Cannabis Control Commission has been very upfront, saying that any city or town that uses zoning regulations to effectively prohibit retail locations are subject to lawsuits. So, the Law Department and the Building Department, and the mayor's office reviewed these maps, the recommendation was 200 feet for legal reasons, and also there is a monetary gain involved in these retail establishments, it's a potential of 6% of the gross, and in limiting where they could go, it potentially limits the amount of monies that the City of Lynn could generate and will likely need moving forward to do some of the ideas that are being proffered to make the city better.
Thank you, Attorney Lamanna. Counsel Field.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel Lamanna, I'm sorry, Attorney Lamanna. Under Section 5, Part C, the hours of operation, that is still subject to a special permit.
That was struck in, that was struck in the regulations. I believe that the Board of Health has some opinions on where these go. That's kind of somewhat fluid, and see what other cities and towns do. I know Salem has memorialized the same hours as liquor stores. There's some, there's been some concern that would Lynn be a destination city, that if we were open later than any other city, if someone was interested in using cannabis, that they may be coming to Lynn, similar to what was occurring when the hours of pouring establishments was at 2 o'clock. So, the Board of Health, I believe, will be putting hours in, but as part of a special permit as well, if, if the feeling is that whatever the Board of Health has established is, is too great hours, too early, not late enough, too late, that that's certainly a proper condition in the special permit itself.
Thank you.
Counsel Staubert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, Counsel Field and I attended a neighborhood meeting in Salem for a potential store opening up in what used to be the Hillcrest Chevrolet site on Highland Ave. I was quite impressed, I think, if any of these establishments open in any of our areas, that it would be wise for us as counselors to do what Counsel Peterson did in Salem and host a neighborhood meeting, because it put a lot of people's, I think, minds at ease. What concerns me here in Lynn, and one of the things there, they were talking about 8 o'clock close time in Salem, and so I would hope that whatever we do, it is in line with what our neighbors are doing, so that we don't run into that old last call, run to Lynn at 2:00 AM thing that we used to see with the bars. But what, what I was kind of enlightened by was the amount of professionalism that is behind it, the amount of investment, what these stores actually look like. The gentleman there had a store in Colorado, it looked like a Starbucks, but what he's opening, or proposing to open there is in excess of 4,000 square feet of retail space and planning on 300 to 500 cars a day. And that's with the possibility of another proposed facility on Highland Ave in Salem that would be between that Hillcrest Chevrolet site and the Lynn line. So, that's, that's a lot, a lot of traffic, and, you know, I left there thinking, we're going to be hard-pressed to find that kind of space, that can, if that's the kind of traffic that's going to be generated, you know, it's certainly not going to be some little corner store. It's going to have to be a sizable place. And the other thing that I think would put a lot of people's minds to ease, because in so many people's minds, they view it as, as a seedy operation, that you're basically going to be taking the, you know, corner dealer and just moving them inside, you know, this dark little corner store, and that's certainly not going to be the case. But the security, you know, I was impressed by, by the security company that they've hired, they do other, other facilities as well, that I think that that would put people's minds at ease. So, you know, again, I think the neighborhood meetings are the way to go, but even with the 200-foot buffer, we're going to be hard-pressed to find the places that could accommodate these kind of businesses.
Thank Counsel Staubert. Counsel Lapia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, through Attorney Lamanna, question about, I have clarifying question on the timeliness. You mentioned April 1. When would they be able, if we do nothing and take no action, they could open next to a school, essentially, is what you're saying?
No, I, that is not true. If this, that would stay at 500 feet. That state is recommend, the Cannabis Control Commission has suggested 500 feet, do not, I personally don't believe it works from a legal perspective, because I think it blocks out too many neighbors, neighborhoods that are viable to locate, and that Lynn would be susceptible to a challenge, stating that through zoning regulations.
Because the control map here that he marked up for us, it goes into schools at the 500-foot mark, right?
It shows you three different models. Deputy Commissioner Amukie put 200 is the closest to a school, the second is 300 feet, and the farthest out would be 500 feet.
So, when do you expect for these to be fully operational? Like, they apply April 1, when would this become in the city?
Legally, they, if, would be July 1st. If they can, if they can find a location, they can get the approval from the state and get approval from this council.
Come before us, again.
They would have to come before you. You may, similar to medical marijuana, where you receive four applications for two locations, and this honorable body selected the two that they believed were the best locations. I'm hopeful that we'll receive many more than six applications. The council can consider 20 or 30 different options and make an informed decision of what is the best location for these facilities with least amount of neighborhood impact, with, and with an eye toward, that there's a lot of money to be made from cities, the way these laws have been drafted, in the sense that 6% of the gross sales would be returning to the city.
Two more comment, question. So, you mentioned the Health Department were working on- So you mentioned the Health Department were working on regulations. Are they under the same time constraints of April 1 to get those down, or do they have to work within the July 1 deadline?
Their timeline would be July 1. So unlike, because the application for a retail establishment at the beginning of April 1 must include a, a site where they're going to locate, the April 1 date is a date that this council needs to be mindful of. The Board of Health regulations will be much more broad in whether you're loud smoking on a sidewalk or in a field or in a park, near a school, inside a school. So they have to July 1 when it's, when it's legal.
And the last question, I think Counsel Walsh covered it, but we're just dealing with the retail aspect. Can you speak about, I know you said cultivating could be other proposals coming before this council and/or what about these, what I hear are called pot pile, parlors or something to that effect? Can you elaborate a little bit?
Cannabis social clubs have been put on hold until December. There had been some thought that they should be included in the regulations that were finally passed to this match. So there's, there's no ability to have a cannabis social parlor opening in the city of Lynn until at least December. And I'd recommend until we see whether, if and when that ever happens because I believe...
Would that follow the same procedure that we're laying out here tonight?
That would, I would recommend it require a zone change to the, to the sense it is not addressed in these regulations because right now they're not lawful. As far as cultivation, there is no limit to the number of cultivators that could locate in the city. But if anyone is interested in cultivation in any form, it does require a special permit from the city and primarily they're located, as I said...
From the council.
From the council. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Cluci asks for a roll call. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
No.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. All the hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of Michelle Doucette, owner of Munchies, for permission to open an ice cream store.
In Wyoming Square.
That's too coincidental. To open an ice cream parlor store with seating at 578-582 Chestnut Street. Petition for a signed permit at Bread Dreams located at 66 Market Square. Petition of Old World Remedies, Inc., Alan Rothenberg, to open a medical marijuana dispensary at 953 Western Ave, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Petition of Minhaivoh for a permit at 738-744 Western Ave to allow retail shops at street level with two floors above street level as residential units and mixed use at street level in a business district. Petition of National Grid to install approximately 40 feet of PVC conduit encased in concrete from pole 28 Sagamore Street at Washington Street to the property of 776 Washington Street in Lynn. Petition of National Grid to install one joint-owned pole on Sagamore Street beginning at a point approximately 40 feet westerly of the center line of an intersection of Washington Street and Washington Street and continuing approximately 40 feet in a westerly direction. Petition of Comcast to place a four-foot by four-foot manhole over the existing Comcast conduit and excavating to place one four-inch PVC conduit 41 feet plus or minus to service 377 Linway. And petition of Comcast to install a new underground conduit located at Nahand Street and Broad Street to provide service for business located at 106 Broad Street.
So I should have counsel. Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, the ayes have it. Committee reports. Ordinance and Rules Committee, Counsel Lozey.
Unanimous vote of the Ordinance and Rules Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, the ayes have it. Ways and Means, Counsel Net.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously to approve and make a motion to accept it.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Please read all the...
Order that the city comptroller be and hereby authorized to appropriate from FY18 property tax, state aid, and other local receipts, the sum of $1 million and zero cents to the City of Lynn Health Trust account. Transfer the sum of $70,000 from the account of reserve to the account of police expense to fund unexpected medical costs in the FY18 that exceeds the amount in original budget submission. Transfer the sum of $30,494 from the account of reserve to the account of fire, sick, and personal buyback, and longevity payroll to fund LFD retirements not in the original budget submission. Transfer the sum of $8,287.78 from the account of reserve to the account of DPW sick buyback payroll to fund DPW retirement payout not in the original budget submission. Transfer the sum of $1,840.40 from the account of insurance expense to the account of workman's comp expense to fund excess claims administration per contract. Order that the city comptroller be and hereby authorized to take the following action. Certify as an available fund the amount of $40,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, DFS, for the FY18 replacement grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $364,304.52 is allotted to the City of Lynn Health Department by the Department of Public Health, DPH, for the FY2018 Prevention Wellness Trust Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $400,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn Community Development by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, ENV, to fund the Lynn Commons Large Improvements Park Number 31 Grant. And certify as an available fund the amount of $40,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, for the recycling IQ kit for curbside communities and other SMRP initiative.
Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Is there an emergency on those?
Yes, there were emergencies to all and make a motion to approve.
Motion made for emergency. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
All the properties and parks, Counsel Staubin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had three items on the agenda. The first was a request from the Mount Olive Church to use the city hall parking lot for a function on July 15. Kind of went back and forth on which they could use depending on if there's a show that night, but the, it was unanimously voted to, to approve in the form of a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, have the order to read?
What's that?
For the public property?
Oh, that was on the Mount Olive Church then.
Okay. Do you want me to read it?
For the church? Or for the Y?
For the Y. Okay.
Yeah.
Order that the mayor be authorized to enter into and execute a further addendum to the development agreement and the addendum to the development agreement dated as of 18th day of January 2017 by and between the City of Lynn and the YMCA of Metro North, Inc., a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation having its usual place of business at 20 Neptune Boulevard, Lynn, Mass. 01902, or an entity formed by the YMCA of Metro North, Inc. The AFFO said further addendum shall prepare by and satisfactory to the Law Department.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
With emergency?
Yes.
Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
License Committee, Counsel Walsh.
President? That was number two.
Oh, you have another, another one.
And the third item on our agenda was regarding public properties. Motion was unanimously made and approved to authorize the Law Department to prepare bid proposals for the sale of properties at 34 Grant Street and 48 Saunders Road and to present them to the committee at our next meeting and to authorize the Law Department to begin eviction proceedings on 3 Bassie Circle, 465 Essex Street, Unit 2, 20 Heath's Court, Unit 103, 21 Brer, Michigan Ave, 13 Radens Grove Ave, 15 Springvale Lane, 61 Nahand Street, and 440 Summer Street in the form of a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cluci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, all set. Counselor?
I am.
Okay.
Want to load that agenda?
License Committee, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you very much. We had a unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Utilities Committee, Counsel Capano? I'm sorry, Counsel Walsh, I do it every time.
That's it. Thank you. Was a unanimous vote of the committee motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Education, environmental, Counsel Chakudis?
Unanimous vote of the committee.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we move on to new business, the governor signed the bill today so we can receive our loan. Not bailout, but loan. So people have to understand that. But I just want to say to each and every one of you that I'm not going to say how proud I am because buzzy gets mad when I do, do that. I'm not going to say how hard you all worked. I won't do that either, but thanks. New business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Under new business, sir, ordered that $9,500,000 is appropriated to assist the city in achieving a balanced budget for fiscal years 2018, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to a special act of the General Court of Massachusetts entitled an Act Relative to the Financial Condition of the City of Lynn, which special act was approved by the governor earlier today or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the city therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all bonds or notes of the city to be issued pursuant to this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require. This order does require an emergency, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Lapierre. Motion made.[1634.88]